FYI, he missed the last RTC meeting, so I hope he's around.
Not good. I do the six o'clock, seven o'clock thing. I know sometimes that trips some people up. I know I've done it before.
He's joining now.
Yeah.
Well, we're late. Just to let everyone know, this is the most non-black I think I've ever worn in my entire life. I feel very visible and bright. Kind of awkward.
Well, for what it's worth, it looks great.
Great thing. All right. Looks like we have council member Bertrand joining us. I'm gonna turn it over to Larry to let us know when we've gone live, and I'll get us started.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. I will be starting it right now. We are live.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this evening's Capitola City Council meeting. I'm gonna turn it over to our city clerk to read some information about remote access for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello and welcome to the Capitola City Council meeting. In accordance with the current Santa Cruz County Health Order and the Governor's Executive Order N 2920, this meeting is not physically open to the public. Council and staff are meeting via Zoom, and there are several ways for the public to watch and participate. Information on how to join the meeting over Zoom or with your phone is available on our website, cityofcapitola.org, on the slides now shown, and on the published meeting agenda. Thank you for attending the meeting. Mayor Peterson, I'll turn back to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Bertrand.
Here.
Councilmember Bator.
Here.
Councilmember Story.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brooks.
Here.
And Mayor Peterson.
Here. Thank you. We're gonna move now to the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you wouldn't mind, I will ask for councilmember Bator to lead us in tonight's pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, councilmember Bator. We're gonna move on now to item two, presentation, and we're gonna be providing a retirement proclamation for senior mechanic Jim Turcot. Do we have Jim on camera? Yeah, if you could wave, Jim. Perfect. All right. So I'm gonna go ahead and read the proclamation. "We are honoring senior mechanic James Turcot upon his retirement for forty years of service to the city. Whereas on June 1, 1980, as a nineteen-year-old, James Turcot was hired as part of a summer youth employment program where Jim exhibited excellent work habits. And whereas, upon his graduation from high school, Jim accepted a full-time position in the Public Works Department as a maintenance worker on November 17, 1980. And whereas, Jim worked as a maintenance worker one and two for five years, and on July 1, 1985, was promoted to the position of maintenance supervisor. Jim typically went above and beyond to take care of all of the demands, last-minute requests, and emergencies that came along. Jim held this position for ten years before moving to the position of mechanic in October of 1995, and finally, senior mechanic in March of 2015. And whereas, Jim was named the Maintenance Division Employee of the Year in 1989 and again in 1995 for mastering everything there is to master in the Public Works Department. And whereas, Jim is an excellent athlete who excelled in golf and basketball and helped a public works team win mini-games against all comers. And whereas, Jim has kept his sense of humor through his many years, ensuring that work with a smile even while comprehending the underbelly of the city's street sweeper leads to longevity. And whereas, during his many years of service, Jim has represented the city of Capitola with the highest degree of professionalism, always keeping the city's best interests in mind. He has maintained exemplary high work standards, learning, leading, and teaching others the importance of a completed job well done, finishing work within budget, and cleaning up in preparation for the next task. And whereas, Jim leaves the city as the longest-tenured full-time employee to date. His forty-plus years of service will likely not be equaled or broken. And whereas, Jim Turcot has decided to move on to the next phase of his life, take off the wristwatch to forget the exact time except the tea time. And whereas, his coworkers in the Department of Public Works wish Jim and his family nothing but the best in retirement life. Now, therefore, I, Kristen Peterson, Mayor of the City of Capitola, on behalf of the entire city council, do recognize and commend Jim Turcot for his forty years of excellent and dedicated service to the people of Capitola and wish him well in his retirement. Jim, congratulations. You have given more years of service to the city than I have been alive on this earth. You are absolutely an incredible example of exemplary public and community service. We definitely want to hear from you, but before I turn the floor over to you for a couple words, I would like to turn it over to Steve Jesper, who I believe has some comments as well.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. City council members. I'm sorry, can't be with you today. Excuse me. I took a pandemic to keep me away. I want to thank you for your years of service. Managed to work with you for almost half your career. You've been an exemplary employee. I just want to wish you and show you happiness and health in retirement. So now, I'd like to turn it over to my cohort and former Public Works Director, or former Assistant Public Works Director, Ed Morrison. Ed?
Good evening. This is a proclamation the mayor just read out for you, Jim. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Peterson. Great job on the proclamation. But one thing you left out of this proclamation, one of his personal abilities that I'm most jealous of is this guy can dance. I mean, Michael Jackson has got nothing on him. Seriously, though, in baseball terms, the city hit a grand slam, a walk-off grand slam, when they hired Jim. It stated in the proclamation, "Jim is well-liked and respected by all his coworkers, present and retired." Me, I love the guy. He is humble as the day is long and has always been soft-spoken. He prefers to let his work speak for him, and it is always spoken volumes. Public Works wanted to present him something with, and they talked about it a little bit. Steve talked about it a little bit, and we thought we'd get him a tea. We tried to get Jimmy's tea to the bank, and we couldn't pry it out of his hands, so in lieu of that, some Public Works, they're presenting him with this gold tea. More often than not, it's a gold tea to the city, but in Jim's case, this is a gold tea to the thing that he's probably most intimate here, the underbelly of the street sweeper. So this is a tea for the street sweeper from all Public Works. My honor to congratulate you on your retirement. I'd like to wish you good luck, good luck to you and your family, and keep it on the fair way. There you go, bud. Congratulations.
I personally like to thank City of Capitola for giving me the opportunity to be an employee. Didn't know what I was gonna do right out of high school, didn't have any clue, but thanks for Ed and a couple other people that prior gave me the opportunity to work here, and all I could do was just try to exceed as much as I could. And the people really helped me out here, and I appreciate everybody I've met over the years and worked with, and they're all great people. And I just hope that you all just do well off after all this pandemic's up and down, get things back to normal, and Capitola back to its beautiful state. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And Jim, again, congratulations, and thank you for all of your service. If we could all either virtually or through reactions, round of applause. Thank you again.
Hold on, Jim.
Thank you.
All right. We are gonna move on to item three, election business, and we will begin with a quick recognition. Can I turn over to our moderator and see if we're ready to? Yes, okay. Okay. We're gonna begin with election business with a recognition of outgoing councilmember Bator. I will begin by saying, Ed, I believe that there was a gift presented to you in these virtual times. I think it was handed off to you with six feet apart from you and whoever handed it off to you. A little bit different than if we were in person, but if you want to hold that up, wonderful. And that is a photo by Brian Garrison of Wet Feet Photography. He had the winning submission in a city photo contest. You know, I want to turn it over to the council for some comments in a minute here, but I'm gonna take the liberty to start. Ed, when I first ran for council in 2016, I came to nearly every council meeting that year to prepare for what it would mean to be on council, and you were the mayor at the time. And I learned so much just from watching you run a meeting, and the way that you were congenial and kind to all people, even when there were disagreements over policy or practice, and I learned so much from that. When I was first elected, you and I went to lunch at Zelda's so you could talk to me about the seat I was about to take at Ambac. And during that conversation, I remember that you spoke truth to me, and you spoke very freely, and I sat there like a deer in the headlights, and I didn't know what to say because I was a brand-new council member. But I will always cherish that from the very beginning that you were thoughtful and kind and honest, and that throughout these last four years on council with you, you have continued to be thoughtful and kind and honest. And that though we have had policy disagreements at times, I never was concerned that we would essentially no longer be able to discuss other policy issues or that we weren't gonna be able to come together on other important matters. I feel very honored to have had four years on council with you. You will be very missed. And I hope you know that I will be knocking on your door in two years to make sure that you're considering running again, if not then, then in the future. And that will be my rallying cry for you from here on until eternity. So I just want to personally thank you, Ed, from the bottom of my heart, from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Kristen.
You have been a wonderful role model for what it means to be a council member in good times and in bad. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to other council members to see if there's other members of the council that would like to comment. And let's turn to councilmember Story.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. Yes, I wouldn't want to miss this opportunity. Ed, it's just unfortunate that we can't all be in chambers there with you to watch and to speak to you personally about our experiences with you. And you and I, ever since you were first elected in 2012, you and I have had a very interesting political history in this community. And through it all, though, I've always admired and respect how hard and how diligently you worked for the city of Capitola, not only being on the council, but you have represented Capitola on all the local commissions and committees. Kristen mentioned Ambac. You were on LACCO. You were on Metro. You were on the Regional Transportation Commission. The Chamber of Commerce before that, and the Public Safety Foundation. You have and are an integral part of this community. And I would have to say that the one that I was probably most impressed by was when you committed yourself to the Select Committee for South Bay Arrivals at the appointment at Sam Far, and you traveled over the hill to represent our community on the issue of the overflights. I thought that demonstrated some real commitment. And, you know, I would have to say that you and I probably didn't agree on everything, but I always appreciated and respected your point of view and the issues that you presented. You were always thoughtful. You were always civil, and you were always, you know, profound. And if I didn't necessarily agree, I always saw one thing that came from you in that you were committed and that you loved this community. in that you were committed and that you loved this community and that you loved the city of Capitola. And, you know, when it comes down to it, that's what really matters. So I want to thank both as a council member and as a resident of the city of Capitola, I want to thank you for all your years of service and your diligent efforts on behalf of the city of Capitola. I won't say goodbye because I know you're going to be in the community and you're going to be back. So I'll just close and say, see you around, Ed, and enjoy your time off. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Let's see, Vice Mayor Brooks has a comment as well.
Councilmember Batorf, I know you have some words to share as well, so I won't take too much of your time. I have truly, truly, gosh, I feel like I'm going to get choked up here. I just think back to our time at Mr. Toots when you sat down with me, and all you've ever done since the moment we've met is support me and believe in me. And that is just a true representation of who you are in believing in Capitola and those who represent it. So Ed, from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much for all that you've done for our city, for me, and as Sam Story just said, I'll see you very soon.
Thank you, Ed.
All right. I'm just going to check to see. Oh, Councilmember Verkan, do you have a comment as well? You're still on mute, Councilmember Verkan.
So I appreciated the last time Ed spoke, and he talked about his history behind why he supported some of the city projects downtown. And so my comment basically is, more so than any other city councilperson that I've known, and I've sat in many meetings, you really worked on projects that helped downtown, you know, drainage, the new one that's coming up, helping to share costs on new sidewalks, I mean, et cetera, et cetera. You've had a focus on downtown, I think, that's exemplary. And you also had a good sense of the business issues. You're someone also that walked around downtown, and you knew those things intimately. So I think that's great. I totally agree with that. I've always agreed with you, actually. And the main reason why I've always agreed with you is because you sat and analyzed problems, and you had your own bent on what the answer should be and what the policy should be. So whether it came to what I wanted, it didn't matter. What I agreed with you on is your effort to come to a solution that was the best for Capitola. So I salute you for that. And hey, I'll see you on the streets.
Thank you, Jac.
Thank you, Councilmember Verkan. We're going to come to you, Councilmember Batorf, I promise. Before we do that, I would like to open it to public comment for any members of the public that would like to recognize Councilmember Batorf. And I will turn it over to our moderator to let us know if there's any members of the public that have comments.
Yes, I believe the first comment, I believe, is one of the panelists, the Capitola POA, I believe, is ready to go.
Good evening, Council staff. Today, isn't that a change? Ed, I mean, everyone talks about your love for the city, but also I think one of the biggest things was your love and appreciation for all the employees here, which was very well felt by not just everyone at the Police Department, but everyone in the city. When we heard about this, you know, we tried to figure out how we could thank you during this pandemic, a little hard, but we came up with a small little gesture to show our appreciation. I'll send over to Scotty.
Kevin, President Pedro, and myself, we went to our POA body. We wanted to recognize your eight years of dedication to the community and the dedication to the Menewoo for its Three Fossils Association and our record division. It didn't go unnoticed, and I appreciate it. We want to present you, go up closely, want to present you with a plaque commemorating your tireless effort with us. Hopefully, you can walk us over tonight, the POA badge and your service of commitment. So we wanted to make sure that was acknowledged from our bow. Thank you.
Scott and Pedro, I have some words for you guys later, but for right now, thank you very much. I think you really know how much that means to me. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a couple more public comments. Mayor Peterson, first up, the supervisor friend.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson, and Councilmember Batorf, or as everybody in the community calls you, Councilmember Batoroff. Just wanted to make sure that we, you didn't get away without some acknowledgement from your friend and also county supervisor. You know, Ed constantly would say that he isn't a politician, that he doesn't want to be an out front guy, but in many respects, I feel like this is what makes you one of the best that we have in our county because you ask for nothing, you do everything, you work harder than most people that I know, you're committed to always what's right. You speak softly, and not often, but when you do, people listen. You're always there for advice to bounce ideas off of, and you never come with an agenda. I mean, just think about if we could model that at a state and national level. Ed, I've really, I've really, we basically came in at the same time. And in fact, at Gail's, and you'll remember that conversation we had when I was first running, and you said you were considering doing the same, and we said, let's go for it. And here we are, eight years later, and I think you have quite a track record and quite a lot to be proud of. I've really, it's been an honor serving with you. Thank you for your commitment. It says a lot that, I mean, it doesn't surprise me to hear the POAs say what they say about your care of the employees because you really are in it for the right reasons. I mean, some people get into these gigs because they have their own ideas of grandeur, and you just simply wanted to make the community you live better, and you did. So Ed, you'll be missed. I'm with Kristen. I'm all for you doing it in the given two years. I know you're not. But we can all wish for the best. Thanks for your eight years of service, and thanks for your eight years of continued friendship.
Thank you, Jac.
Now we have TJ Welch.
Well, I can't really add much more than what we've heard from some of the folks tonight already. I wanted to thank Ed for, one, his appointment to the Planning Commission for me. And, you know, Ed never tried to push me one way or the other. In fact, I was happy, I'm happy to say that he actually let me stay on the Planning Commission, even though he may not have agreed with what I have had to say. So Ed, thank you for the eight years of being the Planning Commissioner. That was something I enjoyed doing. But I also want to say, as a resident and a friend, that Ed, and we've heard it from others tonight, both the colleagues or other fellow council members, from the employees and now even from one of the supervisors, that Ed has done a lot for the community. One, he's a huge supporter of the employees, and that can be difficult. But we just saw recently in one of the last city council meetings where he pushed one of the norms for the city to do away with free parking because it just didn't make sense to give away free parking when we gave the city employees a ticket cut. So that speaks volumes about Ed and where he stands. When he originally got on, I know one of his big commitments was financial responsibility, which watching over these eight years, I've watched him keep that as something that's been the forefront of what he's done in his decisions. So I think that's great as well, and I'm glad to call you my friend. I think he's done a great job as a city. I hope that some of the other council members will keep some of those same missions in front as having that moral compass and that fiscal responsibility compass in front of them. And, you know, I'm really impressed that you actually got the POA to give you a fourth. I think that speaks volumes of value. And when you have differing members on the city council, respect you. I think that says a lot because I think you've done that one thing that I've heard from other council members tonight, is you show them respect for others, even when maybe you were on opposite sides of the decision-making process. So hey, congratulations on your retirement from now the new city council, and we'll see you around town.
Thank you, TJ.
Now I'll ask our moderator if he has any additional public comments.
Mayor Peterson, I do not see any other public comment on this item.
All right. Well, with that, I will turn it over to you, Councilmember Batorf, if you have any comments that you would like to make this evening.
Well, Mayor Peterson, you know me well enough to know I have some comments. But, you know, I was all prepared to give my speech, and the kind words that people say kind of put you in a place where you have to stop and reflect a little bit. So I'm caught in a little reflection right now, but I'm going to try to get through this. I really appreciate the kind words from everybody that spoke. And I'm going to try to get through this letter because you all have business to do tonight. I would first like to thank the city manager and the city clerk for allowing me to participate in the last city council meeting from the Capitola City Council Chambers. Although we have adapted to COVID-19 and its restrictions, there is nothing that can replace holding a meeting in a public building with the public present and the interaction and dynamics that takes place during that forum. I promise the city manager that although I have never been short on words or opinions and that traditionally city council members are not on a clock, I would limit my farewell thoughts to one minute for every year of service. So with eight years of service here at Capitola, please bear with me for the next eight minutes. But before you start the clock, I have one disclaimer statement to read. It must be clearly stated that although one may come up with a plethora of ideas while serving in this role, none of them ever come to fruition unless you are successful at convincing at least two other members of the city council that your idea has merit. So I take credit for some accomplishments because it was only because two other individuals felt the same way that I did. Conversely, when I get to my failures or shortcomings that may have occurred for two reasons. One, because I was totally off base and wrong. Or two, even worse, I didn't work hard enough to convince at least two other people that another direction may have been delivered a better outcome. So with those disclaimers, you can start the clock. So many things have gone through my head over the last few months, and the ability to recap everything in my tenure would be impossible and, quite frankly, boring. I have chosen to narrow it down to four main topics: accomplishments, failures, the future, and gratitude. I've been fortunate to work with a variety of council members. At my very first meeting, the agenda packet was 850 pages long. I thought it was a joke. I read it all. We were voting on whether to charge 10 cents or 25 cents for a paper bag in an attempt to persuade people to start using reusable bags. Batorf, Harland, and Norton voted yes, and it prevailed. My final decision was made when I asked my mom, if she forgot a reusable bag in the car, would she walk back to the car to save a dime? She said no, but she would walk back to save a quarter. Sales tax measures. I campaigned heavily for Measure O, and it only passed by 67 votes. That generates $1 million a year for perpetuity for the city of Capitola. Same with Measure F, which generates $1 million a year for 10 years to help rebuild our wharf, flume, and jetty, the jetty which, as we sit here right now, is being rebuilt. TOT tax. After two tries, and I won't recap the first because it was ugly, I built an alliance with the local business community that resulted in Capitola raising its TOT tax by 2%. That tax supports local business, children, and generates at least $150,000 every year. With guidance and assistance from Steve Jesperg, and starting with a small project in front of Beach House Rentals, we developed a shared business city sidewalk program that allowed us to widen or replace hundreds of feet of sidewalk in the village from Margaritaville to Zelda's, along Stockton Avenue, and down Capitola Avenue to the trestle. I've called the next section shortcomings because I really don't believe during my eight years that on the city council, we did anything that negatively affected the forward path of the city. There were some items that I didn't agree with, sometimes vehemently, but I am choosing to take the high road tonight and not bring those up. Sometimes, however, I was never able to accomplish, mainly because they never made their way to the city council. Number one on my list is the Village Hotel. When I campaigned for this position eight years ago, I firmly stood on the position that the Village Hotel would not only replace the historic landmark and provide the city with a solid stream of revenue, but there would be a shot in the arm the village needed to revitalize shops, restaurants, and other lodging facilities. I still feel the same way. Narrow-minded thinking by a small group of people for many years has prevented any builder from even presenting a plan to the council. If as a community, all we do is try to stop policies and developments that represent some kind of change, we can guarantee that we will be successful in doing nothing. While it may seem romantic that we keep everything the way it is, it is unrealistic to believe that we will be able to meet the future needs of our community by doing so. Now more than ever, with the long-lasting effects of the pandemic, the village needs something to draw the overnight visitor who will sleep, shop, and dine here. Beach visitors and surfers park, although mostly in our neighborhoods, leave their trash and drive home without even buying a T-shirt or a cheeseburger. Hopefully someday, the hotel will be built to restore the grandeur this charming coastal village town deserves. Number two, I have joined yet another group of unsuccessful council members who have tried desperately to open the Rispin Park to the public. I know I have voted on numerous occasions to provide additional funds for that project, but it is still closed, and for that, I am sad. The future. Obviously, the first and foremost task of the new city council will be to deal with the adverse effects of the pandemic. Hopefully for all of us, the vaccine will lead us in a positive direction. I have been fortunate to serve on the RTC and the Metro Board of Directors for six years. It seems that the larger the commission and the more the public comment, the less time there is for commissioners to actually have debates on the topic. After listening to all the public comment, discussing all the options, and evaluating all the studies, I believe running a train, whether it be freight or commuter, from Watsonville to Santa Cruz is a boondoggle, period. A world-class trail is what should be constructed on that property. I believe the mall is the greatest and maybe the last opportunity to provide long-term stability, both financially and structurally, for this city. It will provide necessary housing in the right direction, in the right location. With careful guidance from the city council, this project could benefit all of 41st Avenue, enhance the village, and add desirable features for all the residents of Capitola. I am thankful for my time on the city council. The citizens of this town allowed me to make decisions for eight years. My goal was always to do what was best for all 10,000 residents. I will walk away from this job and rely on the current elected officials to make decisions moving forward. I do not believe my role or that of other elected officials is to continually be active involving the path of the city. Change is good, it is necessary, and without it, we will not be able to thrive. Finally, gratitude to my colleagues, Jac, you and I.
Councilmember Batorf, you have been muted. Can we unmute Councilmember Batorf?
Oh.
Did you tap?
That was me. I did it on my own. Sorry. Gratitude, we don't want to forget gratitude. Jac, you and I, we've had a tenuous relationship over the years, and I'm glad for all the times whenever we thought we were going in bad directions, we would stop, go to Mr. Toots' meet, and try to work things out. Jac, you have the kindest heart of anybody I've ever worked with on the council, and you always brought that to the meeting, and you voted from your heart, and I appreciated that. Sam, you were here when I started, and you're here when I left. I remember when I first started, they were accusing you of backroom deals for rent control, and you've always been a solid pillar of wisdom, and I leave this council knowing that you will carry this council with that wisdom forward. Yvette, you're a hard charger. You know, when you and Kristen got on the council, I called you guys the bookends. Jamie said I couldn't say that, but I said the two of them are going to keep us in check. They're going to make sure that the three of us work in the right direction. And now with me leaving, I think it's going to be changed to the Three Musketeers, and I have confidence that you, along with Kristen and Margo, will do a great job. But for you, I love your energy. You commented on that, and I'm proud of what's going to happen to you in about the next hour. So thank you. And Kristen, you hit the nail on the head. You know, we started, you know, you and I actually first know, we started uh I you know, you and I actually first met when we were making phone calls on the library. And uh I remember you, you were hardworking, and and I'm so proud of the work you did as a mayor. Uh you set a good example of what a compassionate mayor should be like and how to run a meeting, and and I thank you for everything you did. To all the city employees, thank you for being so warm and welcoming. From my first day in the council, I always felt like I belonged. I have a special appreciation for all of Public Works employees who work all hours of the day and night keeping our streets open, our drains open, and making every effort to keep the water in the ocean. They pick up the trash and still find time to hang Christmas lights. If you've ever seen something broken and then miraculously miraculously it's repaired, chances are Public Works has something to do with it. I cannot say enough about our police department. We are living in a difficult time of real appreciation and need to remember to acknowledge the people who put their lives at risk every day. We were all once kids, we all played together, we all grew up, and we all chose careers. We are the same people. Police officers are just the ones stuck with the responsibility of enforcing the laws that we may or not agree with. For that, I am sorry, and I will pray for unity for all of us. I have been fortunate to work with four city clerks, three finance directors, three community development directors, three police chiefs, two legal firms, but only one public work director and one city manager. All of you have brought great skills and talents to the city and improved on the work of the person before you. Steve and Jamie, I have no one to compare you to. I do know, Steve, that you've always been here, and as crazy as my ideas have been, you always found time to listen to me, advise me, and in some cases, actually find a way to do what I ask. And for that, I am extremely grateful. It's no secret that I believe our city manager is a great asset to the city of Capitola. I have challenged him for eight years and sometimes put him in a situation no city manager would ever want to be in. He always maintained an even keel and led the city through many difficult times, including rent control, the broken pipe and flood, and now the pandemic. He always found a way to stay the course. Several people have been personal supporters of mine, well, at least most of the time. And even though I can't mention them all, I can't leave without acknowledging a few. Glenn and Karen Hannah, thank you for your friendship support and the best campaign sign ever on your roof. Ted Burke, we have fought like cats and dogs, but in the end, the city, local business, and the kids all won. TJ Welch and his wife Connie, the man who brought me to this town, he was the best planning commissioner a resident in this city could ever have. I am happy and fortunate to have them as my best friends. And to my girlfriend of 10 years, Jennifer Cosgrove, I met her at Paradise Beach Grill, and with the help of a chicken quesadilla, the rest is history. We've shared a glorious time in this beachside town. She has stood by me through thick and thin. She endured meeting after meeting, public comment, letters to the editor, and the newspaper. Tonight, it all comes to an end. We can go back to sunsets, walks on the beach, and a glass of wine on Thursday nights. Cheers, Capitola, and thank you, Mayor Peterson, for allowing me to share these final thoughts.
Thank you, Councilmember Botor. A round of applause. You've truly been an absolute pure city, and and as others have said, this is this is not goodbye. This is see you around uh hopefully uh quite often. Fantastic. All right, well, um Councilmember Botor, you're you're gonna be a part of this um this next item, uh and that is consider a resolution confirming and approving the candidates of returns and results of the general municipal election.
Well, for the last time, I would like to approve staff recommendation.
A second?
We have a motion and a second. If I could turn to staff briefly just for clarification, do I need to go to public comment for these items before we get to general government or no?
We could see if there's any public comments on this prior to the vote.
Okay. I'll turn it over to the moderator then.
Ma- Mayor Peterson, I do not see anyone asking to comment on this item.
Great, thank you. All right, uh is there any additional council comments before we uh move on with the vote? All right, with that, we have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Bertrand.
I approve.
Councilmember Botor.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Story.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brooks.
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson.
Aye. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously, and with that, I will turn it to our clerk uh as we have um as, excuse me, as we have um, oh, excuse me, my apologies. There will be a brief pause right now uh after our vote uh for staff to reorganize, and the city clerk is gonna let us know when we're ready to resume uh with item 3C.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Aye.
That was very- Have a wonderful evening.
You too, boy. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I hope to see you around.
You will.
Okay.
Thanks for your patience, everyone. We're just taking a moment for staff to reorganize some things within the council chambers. Uh and as soon as the city clerk lets us know, we'll be right back in just just a moment.
Thank you for your patience. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Uh, excuse me, I was just moving some things around. We are ready to continue. Um, the next item is 3C. Go go ahead, please. Thank you.
All right, yes, we are on to item uh 3C, oath of office ceremony for newly elected and re-elected council members. And I'm gonna turn it over to the city clerk, who will be administering the oath of office uh for in the order I see on the agenda, it will be myself, uh followed by our new council member, Margot Kaiser.
Yes, thank you. Uh, our current mayor and soon-to-be new council member, Kristen Peterson, we're doing this in order of votes received, so we will go with you first. Um, if you wanna raise your right hand and repeat after me, I'll read the oath slowly, and then you can repeat as we go, okay? Wonderful. So I state your name.
I, Kristen Peterson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
That I will support and defend-
That I will support and defend-
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies-
Against all enemies-
Foreign and domestic-
Foreign and domestic-
That I will bear truth, true faith and allegiance-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance-
To the Constitution of the United States-
To the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely-
That I take this obligation freely-
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully-
And that I will well and faithfully-
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
And is Margot ready?
Ready.
Wonderful. So we'll do the same thing. You can raise your right hand. Great. I state your name.
I, Margot Kaiser.
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
That I will support and defend-
That I will support and defend-
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies-
Against all enemies-
Foreign and domestic-
Foreign and domestic-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance-
To the Constitution of the United States-
To the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely-
That I take this obligation freely-
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully-
And I will well and faithfully-
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties of which I am about to enter.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Councilmember Kaiser. Um, would you like to say a few words before we move on to the the next item?
Sure, just quickly, I wanted to say thank you for all my supporters, um and putting your trust in me, um people that endorsed me, uh helped me hang door hangers, post signs, things like that. It truly, from the bottom of my heart, has meant a lot on this uh this new venture, and I can't wait to work more closely with the community and really get behind Capitola and our our comeback from COVID. Let's do it.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Councilmember Kaiser. Um, we're gonna move on now to uh item 3D, council reorganization for 2021. Um, this is the point where council members nominate and elect a new mayor and vice mayor for the coming year. Um, before we move into uh hearing motions on this item, if I may take a couple moments um to to speak to uh my my reelection in my year as as mayor. Um, I felt very blessed four years ago to have been elected to Capitola City Council, and at the time, I lived on Depot Hill, and I would stand at the top of the hill and 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 look out over the village, and it was this overwhelming feeling of um community and gratitude, and I couldn't imagine having the opportunity to to be a part of the the Capitola City Council. I was lucky enough, as I mentioned previously, to spend the whole year that I was running in 2016 uh learning from uh Councilmember Botor in his time as mayor, and and in my years on the council, I have got to witness uh and and learn from and be a recipient of the um knowledge and experience of all of the mayors that have come since then. Mike Termini and Stephanie Harland and Jacques Bertrand. Um, Sam, I wasn't around when you were mayor, but I'm I'm, you know, the time's coming. So um I wanna thank uh everyone that I have served on council with in these last four years, because I have learned so much. Um, not only about what it means to be a council member, but about being a good community member, about being a good person, a good friend, a good leader. Um, and I could not have have asked for more in that regard. And I wanna thank everyone who has supported me in my original um election in 2016 and my reelection in in 2020, um especially this year, because it was a difficult year um for people to to campaign or support candidates. And so I I am so very grateful for every single person who has supported me. No one accomplishes anything alone, and I am certainly um no exception to that. Um, I I also want to take this moment to to thank my my family. Um, everything I have ever been or ever will be is because of uh my parents and my family, my supportive, or excuse me, my uh extended family uh to my partner Nick and all the support that he has provided to me. I I simply could not have survived these past four years, and especially not this year, um without that kind of love and support. Speaking specifically to my year as mayor this year, it was so different than I expected it would be. It was a year of challenges and difficulties. Um, and I certainly learned a lot about crisis management, and um I I am grateful for the support of our city managers, of our vice mayor, uh Vice Mayor Brooks, for all of the support and assistance that she has provided me of all the frantic phone calls to both uh Vice Mayor Brooks and uh City Manager Goldstein when when things looked like they were they were just piling up this year. But at the same time, I could not be more grateful to have had the opportunity uh to be the mayor of this fantastic city. Um, and I I just want to express thanks to to my my fellow council members for entrusting me with with this responsibility this year. Um, and to all of our residents, um, and to all of our residents. It's it's really been an honor to be your mayor this year, and I'm excited to continue to serve on your council in the next four years.
Mayor Peterson, before you go, um not go very far.
Mayor, stop.
Before we move further with um item 3D, I'd just like to say a couple of words about you. Um, I believe there's a little package you have in front of you before you open it. Um, I just wanted to say tonight, I have the honor of recognizing Kristen Peterson for all of her hard work as mayor for the city of Capitola in what I would describe as one of our city's most challenging years. Kristen's dedication to our community and its members is clear. She is a champion of women and for equity. She has dedicated endless hours to keeping Capitola healthy and vibrant, and even takes the time to call her neighbors to simply check in. Kristen has continued the practice of past mayors to ensure that all voices in our community are heard and valued, and always seeks the middle ground when conflict arises. In a small community like Capitola, connectivity and transparency is essential. And this past year, you could count on Kristen to forge a path forward as our city faced a worldwide pandemic, fires, and huge bet uh budget deficits. Kristen ha- has been and will continue to be a leader I aspire to, and I'm humbled to sit next to her on the dais and on Zoom. Thank you, Kristen, for all that you um do and will continue to do for our beautiful town, Capitola. Do you want to open the gift?
Yes, I have a a box that was delivered to me today. Oh. Uh, it's a travel. It says Kristen Peterson, Mayor, City of Capitola, 2020.
Congratulations, Kristen, on your newly uh your reelection, and thank you again for all that you've done.
Thank you. I'm I'm so, I'm so grateful. Thank you so much. And I, I'll make this quick, so I know we need to move on, but I think it's um just a funny, a funny story. As as I was getting ready today, I I was looking at a candle holder I have in my house that, and this might come as a surprise to many of you. Um, but years ago, I competed in the Miss Santa Cruz County 2005 Pageant and got the Miss Congeniality Award. And so I think it's funny that when I looked at that and saw Miss Congeniality 2005, and then I look at this and see Mayor Capitola 2020, and I think, wow, what a difference 15 years makes. So again, thank you very much um for the opportunity to have this year of service. Um-
Madam Mayor?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, maybe before we move on, um, I wanted to um just recognize your your service as mayor. You know, invariably, it seems like every mayor confronted with a particular um challenge, uh a difficulty during the course of their tenure. But in all my years, I don't believe I've seen a mayor that has been confronted with with such a challenge that has been so dramatic, that has been so shifting, and has been so persistent. And I just want to um um tell you how much, I mean, I have appreciated how well you have handled the COVID pandemic uh and the changes that it has brought, and how you have guided and led us through a a whole new way of being. And you've done that with- And you've done that with, with great confidence, um, and I think great calm, uh, and composure. Um, you've almost made this seem normal. Um, so I want to thank you for that and to recognize what you have gone through. And on top of that, you ran a reelection campaign, um, and was, and, and were reelected, so congratulations. Um, but, and I, I want to, I look forward to continuing to serve with you. Um, but thank you for your year of, of mayorship. Um, and always remember, once a mayor, always a mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Story, I appreciate that. Uh, Councilmember Bertrand, you have your hand up also?
Yeah, I'd like to say that, um, I think anyone listening to our city council meetings and seeing you run the meetings would say, hey, just like Sam said, everything's normal. So you transformed what was rather chaotic around everyone in this town and you made them feel that this city had it under control. And I think that took a lot of oomph, a lot of character. And I've seen you grow over this year. This year has been hard for you in many ways, a new job, uh, comfort of a new, uh, excuse me, partner. I mean, just many things that many people would find, I'm gonna only focus on that because you had to focus on so many things. No matter who, no matter who zoomed in our meeting, they thought Capitola was going steady on and you're the one that did that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bertrand, that's really kind, I really appreciate that. All right. We are on, uh, we are still on item, uh, three D. And so this is a time for city council members to nominate and elect a new mayor and vice mayor. And I think we're gonna start, uh, we're gonna do this in two. So we're gonna start with the nomination of a new mayor and then I will turn it over to the new mayor and we will, um, move on to the nomination of a new, uh, vice mayor.
If I may, uh, Mayor, uh, Peterson, I would, uh, it's my honor to nominate, uh, Vice Mayor Brooks, um, as mayor, um, for the next year.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. I think it's a very smart motion and a second. Uh, do we, uh, have any, uh, public comments on this item before we, uh, before we vote?
Mayor Peterson, we have one comment, Supervisor Brand.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson, thank you, Larry. Um, I'm very excited, uh, that the council has chosen to nominate Vice Mayor Brooks. Uh, this entire county's been making history this year and the city of Capitola is no different. If I'm not mistaken, it'll be the first, uh, Latina mayor in, in Capitola City history. And, uh, what an amazing thing to have happen tonight. Uh, Vice Mayor Brooks, you as Councilmember Botwark had noted, uh, are just a, a breath of fresh air, remarkable energy for the city of Capitola. And for those of you who don't interact with me that much, a fierce advocate to the county on behalf of the city of Capitola. Uh, Vice Mayor Brooks does not take no for an answer. In fact, she doesn't really ask, she tells you how things are going to be. And that's exactly the kind of representative that the city of Capitola deserves. She's gonna be an outstanding mayor. I fully support this motion and appreciate the opportunity to address it tonight. And also welcome, uh, the new council member, Margot. Uh, uh, looking forward to working with you too.
Thank you Supervisor Friend. Um, do we have any additional public comment? I'll turn it to our moderator to let us know.
Mayor Peterson, I do not see any additional public comment.
Great, with that, we will bring it back to council. Uh, we have a motion and a second. There's no additional council comments, we have a roll call, please.
Yes. Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Councilmember Story.
Aye.
And Mayor Brooks.
Hi, thank you so much.
All right, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor Brooks, congratulations.
Thank you very much, everybody. Um, as before we take it to the second piece, I'd just, uh, like to say just a few words. Um, I, I just want to first thank my colleagues for making this happen tonight. It is my true honor to serve as your mayor for the next year. I wanted to share with you a quick story and I know there's been a lot of them tonight, but I just wanted to share a quick story about my path into office. It actually begins when I was in fifth grade. I lived on a very busy neighborhood street in San Jose. Right across the street from my childhood home was a head start and a walkway to my elementary school. And every day I would walk across the street and often would think to my young self, gosh, this is a really dangerous road to cross and people need to slow down. And at that time, I knew nothing about the city nor how it functions. And when I brought this up to my teacher, she encouraged me to write a letter to my city council about my concerns. Well, for some reason, my letter received traction and not too long afterwards, the city put up a slow children crossing sign. I could not believe it, I could not believe that something was actually being done and that my 10-year-old voice mattered. I could not believe there were others who cared just as much as I did about my neighborhood. And now, as I think back to that experience, I realize that my success could not have been achieved alone. It took the encouragement of my family, my parents, Carolyn and Oscar, who are here tonight, the teachers, the city officials, plus a little determination of my own for that sign to go up. It took all of us together to be able to do good. It was a true testament to democracy. And that is why I sit here before you tonight, to simply continue to do good for you and others in the community. Capitola is an amazing community, one that I believe people can only dream of. And it is my honor to be part of it. I intend to help our city find balance and security as we move through the pandemic and begin to rebuild. It is so important to me that we focus on supporting all people in our community and focus on equity in all aspects of our city planning. So, thank you again to everyone. I see all of my family and friends on the Zoom panel members, uh, list there. I see my beautiful, smart daughter Sedona and my supporting husband Larry. Thank you for being here tonight and congratulations to our newest council member. I look forward to working with all of you. Um, so with that, I'll go ahead. And for my family who's watching, you may go now, you guys don't have to stick around. Um, but for, uh, entertain a motion for Vice Mayor at this point.
I would, uh, like to make a motion for Councilmember Story to serve as Vice Mayor if he will accept that nomination.
I'll accept that and I'll second that.
Great, we have a first and a second, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story.
Vice Mayor Story.
Oh, I, you know, Chloe kinda cut out, so.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That, um, you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I, I accept the nomination, uh, and vote, uh, yes.
Thank you, and Mayor Brooks.
Aye, congratulations, Vice Mayor Sam Story. Now we'll move on to item four for additional materials. Um, City Clerk, do we have any additional materials at this time?
Yes, we had several. There were additional materials for items eight C and eight D, as well as nine C and nine D.
Great, thank you. Okay, now we're gonna move on to item five, additions and deletions to agenda. City Manager, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Staff has no changes.
Okay, thank you. Next item we have is item six for public comments. Do we have any public comments for items not on tonight's agenda?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see any, uh, attendees with their hands raised and I do not see any emails.
Okay, great. Seeing none, we'll move on to item seven, city council and staff comments. This is a time where city council members and staff may comment on matters of a general nature or identify issues for staff response or future council considerations. Um, you have a, they, you have two minutes to speak at this time. Do we have any city council comments? Okay, I'm just checking for any hands, I see none. Any staff comments?
Mayor Brooks, I do have one announcement I would like to make. First, there is an update on the pandemic situation in our county that's in your agenda packet on consent. I'm not gonna pull that off, but I just wanted to reiterate to everybody that I know that this has been a very long and difficult haul for all of us. Um, we're more than nine months into this situation and I think it's, uh, been getting old. But I just wanted to stress that, uh, at no other point in the pandemic have we had as high prevalence of this horrible disease as we have in our community now. And this is really the opportunity for everybody to double down on their, um, best behavior. Uh, hospitals are filling up and now is not the time to relax anyone's attention. In addition, I also just wanted to briefly announce that the county of Santa Cruz, um, today submitted their plan on, it's good news, their plan for the state of California for their vaccination program. Um, in that plan, they talk about who's gonna be the first people to get it. And they do expect the very first deliveries and this won't be for the broad community, but this will be for folks who care, for people who are suffering from COVID. Um, they do expect a limited initial delivery coming up next week. So, very exciting times and I really just encourage everybody, uh, to redouble their efforts and to understand that hopefully there is a light at the end of this tunnel.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, moving forward, we're on to item eight, consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time the city council votes on the action unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed for separate review. Items pulled forward, uh, pulled separate will be considered, um, following the government, our general government. Are there, uh, any council members who would like to pull an item on the consent? Okay, I don't see any. So, any, um, members of the public who'd like to comment on any of the consent items?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see any attendees, uh, asking to comment on this.
Okay, so then I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote.
I'm sorry, has there been a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move the consent calendar.
Thank you.
A second.
Thank you. Now maybe we have a roll call.
Yes, Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
I apologize, aye.
Vice Mayor Story.
Aye.
And Mayor Brooks.
Aye. Thank you, that passes. Now we're gonna move on to item nine B, the fiscal year 2021 budget update. Can I have a report from staff, please?
So before our finance director gives the report, I just want to interject a little bit, give a little bit of context here. The, the first thing I will note is that overall, um, the news is good, which I think is really, um, a testament to the hard work of this council and, uh, the entire city has done over the last nine, 10 months. Um, you may recall that we had a, a grand jury report recently that was talking about how cities need to manage risk differently. And, and personally, I had a slightly different take on that, that analysis. And, and what I have always taken away from all my experience of working with cities is the number one thing for a city to do, uh, to respond to threats and risks is, is number one, is, is to be adaptable and to, to take action and decisive action when necessary, um, and make decisions. And I want to commend this city because we, we did that. Uh, at the front end of this pandemic, we were faced with very difficult financial decisions. We made those difficult decisions and that has put us in a far stronger place than many other cities around the state. So, with that, I want to turn it over to Jim, who's gonna lead us through this presentation this evening, uh, on the mid-year budget update. Jim?
Thank you, Jimmy.
Mayor, if, if I may, Jim, before you start, I just had a question about, uh, as a point of order. Um, did we skip over item nine A, which is the review of initial council appointment?
Vice Mayor Story, absolutely, I'm keeping you on your toes tonight, you know, as, as a vice mayor to keep me in line.
Well, I think it, it's at your discretion whether you want to proceed with nine B or, and come back to nine A, but.
That's what happens to that since, um, Jim is on, online here. Thank you so much, Vice Mayor Story.
Thank you, Mayor Brooks. Let me take one moment to share my screen. Can everyone see that fine? Okay, thank you guys. Uh, City Manager Goldstein just mentioned this is our first quarter update. So to just go over a couple of the highlights from the first quarter. Um, our sales tax is performing very similar to last year. So this year, we're slightly below $2 million of sales tax revenue. Last year, we were slightly over. So this is, um, much better than we had anticipated nine months ago and where we would be right now. Um, this puts us at 16% above our adopted budget. And if you recall, we had reduced our budget this year by 21% from the prior year. Um, from transit occupancy tax continues to outpace projections. Year-to-date, we received a little over 635,000 compared to about 718, 718,000 last year. That represents 80% of our amended budget, which is just a little below 800,000. And if you recall, our adopted budget had reduced this revenue by 71% from the prior year. Um, we saw better than anticipated numbers coming in early, so we amended that in September to equal 50% and we're still outpacing those projections. Um, parking revenue is also being better than anticipated. We've received, um, a little over $316,000 this year versus just slightly under 438,000 in the prior year. That represents 74% of our adopted budget, which as a reminder, was reduced by 50% from the prior year. On the expenditure side, our expenditures are down a little over $725,000 from the prior year and are tracking on budget. As far as a, a review, um, so my qualifying statement before you start running through this is, on the taxes, our revenues, we would be comparing for a quarter, 25%. All other items that we talk about, we went ahead and ran numbers through October just because they're available and we wanted to have the most current data. So again, taxes, look at 25%, everything else, we should be balancing around 33%. So you can see taxes are right on schedule, slightly below last year, but, um, doing much better than anticipated. I think that says 3%, my screen's a little funky right now. Um, licenses and permits are flat, they're only at 16%, but just, um, last week, we sent out our business license renewals and we started receiving payments this week and those payments will continue through the middle of January. So that number will look better the next time we talk about, um, this revenue source. Intergovernmental revenue is way up from last year and that's primarily due to the $125,000 of care spending that we got. Um, and we've received all of that. Charges for services are down, we anticipated this, so although they are down, they're about where we expected them to be. Claims and forfe, forfeitures, basically the same thing, down slightly from the prior year. Um, or down a little bit from the prior year, but, but tracking on budget with what we had anticipated. And uses of money and property also down, that, that's really, um, interest earnings driving that. So we have the same cash balances or similar cash balances this time of year that we had last year. It's just the interest rates that tend to us. And then other revenues are tracking right along with about where we had anticipated they would be. So as of right now, total revenues, 26% of budget. That's being brought down a little bit artificially, a little by the taxes. Again, tho- those revenues will catch up, property tax was due today, so we'll see those payments coming with the city, um, towards the end of this month, early January. And then, uh, we're only down a little over eight and a half percent from where we were this time last year. So staff is gonna be recommending some proposed revenue budget amendments. Uh, those will total a little over 1.4 million and consist of $700,000 of increased sales tax, 330, a little over 333,000 of, uh, TOT, that's the non-restricted portion that stays within the general fund, increasing parking meter and pay station revenue by a little over 214,000. Uh, the TOT revenue that's restricted for early childhood and youth programs increased 8,700 and the TOT restricted the local business increase, increased by 9,900. And then we were also awarded a, um, grant, SB two grant, so we'd like to, um, amend the vice. So we'd like to, um, amend the budget to be able to recommend that revenue, $160,000. There'll be a, um, equal amount on the expenditure side so that we can, um, execute that grant. We do have a couple of decreases proposed, um, totally 180,000, that's recreation class fees. 175,000, when we first adopted the budget or were preparing the budget in spring, we weren't really sure what we were going to be able to do with class fees, and we had so many different things going on, um, in discussions with the recreation supervisor. The, the expenses for this revenue source are really tied to the revenue, so we kind of let that one just stay pat to see how it would perform. It's, we're not able to do as many classes as we had hoped to do, so we're going to, um, request to reduce that revenue by 175. And similarly, on the, um, sports fees, we just can't have the, uh, not able to do those things, so another reduction of, uh, 5,000. So the net proposed increase to the revenue budget is, um, $1,246,247. Um, as far as comparing this year to last year on performance, I have, um, some selective revenue sources on the left column there. The next column over is our budget, how much we reduce the Bradley Burns, Measure O and Measure F, were each reduced just a little bit under 21%. TOT, again, originally at 75, it's amended to a little bit over 50%. Uh, parking was 50% reduced, and then the, um, other two, or other three categories there. Or, or that next column over, actual first quarter, that's our performance. So Bradley Burns, believe it or not, is actually a little bit higher right now, um, by 1%. But Measure O and Measure F are lagging a little bit, 10%, and just under 12% respectively. And let, I want to, let me go across from the top now. Um, on the recommended new budget, what we're talking about, not minus 10%, is mending the budget to be basically 90% of the prior year. So we, the amendment would take us to, um, just over that 10% reduction. And on the Measure O and Measure F, that would be just under 17% on those. For, um, TOT, and that has the dollar amounts on the right-hand side. Uh, the TOT, right now, our actual, um, performance is down just under 10.5%. So the, um, new recommended new budget would be a reduction of, or 75% of last year, reducing it by 25% from the prior year, which is better, and increase over there on the right-hand column, 333,000. Parking, we had reduced originally by 50%. Actual performance is, uh, just under 19, so we are recommending to take that to a reduction of 25. Uh, the recreation classes and sports, again, we didn't do a whole lot of that just to see how that would play out. Uh, we're down almost 90% there, so we're suggesting to reduce that by 68.8. See if we can do some different things in the first quarter, and then we can revisit this one, um, at our next budget amendment, or the budget review. Excuse me, state grant revenue, that's just putting in that SB2 grant. We didn't have anything budgeted. We didn't get the grant until after the budget was adopted. And then our other general revenues, that's, it's down 54%. A lot of that timing stuff, it's a lot smaller dollars, so we're just going to kind of keep tracking that as we would in a normal year and then come back at the next budget review, which would be the same as our mid-year in a normal year, and see what recommendations we need to do, if any, at that point. So in total, our current budget on these revenue sources was reduced by just under 22%. Actual performance, a little bit over 12. So we'd like to, um, take that 22, or 21.8% down to 13.7, and increase revenues by the 1, 1.2 million, as I stated before. I'm going to do a quick, um, expenditure review. So again, um, these, that percent of budget in that third column, or middle column there, we're, we're comparing against 33% of the year. Personnel, while it's down from the prior year, if you recall, we make our, um, pers UAL payment, a lump sum payment, at the beginning of the year. It enables us to save about $50,000 over the course of the year rather than paying monthly. So that number will smooth out as we get deeper into the year. Um, but that, that was a $210,000 increase this year, and that's what's making that number look a little bit high with that lump sum payment. Contract services, uh, down. That's one of our, our biggest areas that we've had, 486,000, and tracking pretty much on budget. Training and memberships are also down, um, and tracking a little bit better than budget at this point. Supplies also down, tracking on budget, and internal service funds, 25%. We do those, uh, transfers into the internal service fund quarterly, so that's why that one should say 25%. So that's right on target. And so total expenses are, um, 38.2% of our budget. Again, that's bumped up a little bit from the, the Calpers UAL. And, um, percentage-wise down, we are down at 12.2% from the prior year. And I'm going to turn it over to the city manager, and he's going to go through some proposed expenditure budget amendments.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, looks like some of my highlights stayed on the screen.
You can start with that.
It's all right. Um, so there's a number of new expenditures that we are proposing at this mid-year budget point. Um, one, key one is the lifeguard contract with the city of Santa Cruz. Uh, we have been in discussions with the city of Santa Cruz, and, uh, we expect to bring a contract for services, uh, for lifeguards to city council in January. And so we would recommend making a budget amendment now so that we have the resources necessary to pay for that. In addition, uh, you may recall that we cut out our contribution to the Regional Homeless Action Partnership. This is a partnership between all of the cities and the counties that's been going on for more than two decades. It involves everybody, all the cities, uh, contributing, uh, a proportional share based on population for the winter shelter each winter, as well as for the biannual census and some other miscellaneous costs we do regionally in our homeless prevention efforts. Uh, the 20,000 does not represent Capitola's full contribution to the half, um, but it is 50% of our typical contribution. And I am recommending it at this point because these regional collaborations, this regional collaboration's been going on for so long. Uh, it's important, and obviously, to the extent that capital is not contributing, it certainly weakens that, uh, collaboration in the future. We are also suggesting a $500 per council member training budget. You'll recall this was cut entirely, uh, last spring. Um, in particular, there are a number of virtual conferences that I know that could be valuable, particularly for our new council members to participate, new council member to participate in as, um, as we all start to learn the ropes of, of new positions. So we are recommending a $500 per council member training budget for the remainder of this fiscal year. We have $20,000 that we're suggesting for the janitorial services to augment public works. Uh, you recall, we did this at the last quarterly update. It's proven to be very effective in freeing up our crews to do more, um, kind of a heavy lifting work. And the janitorial service contracts has freed them up from needing to take care of the public restrooms as frequently. We're also suggesting $5,000 to begin some, um, uh, fire suppression planning for the Eucalyptus Grove on Park Avenue that the city owns. Uh, this was something that came to our public works director's attention during the police build the fires this summer, uh, that probably we, we, we can do more in terms of long-term planning and developing some sort of strategy about how we manage that, that open space. Uh, then in addition, we are proposing 450,000 that goes into our ISFs. Uh, I'm sure council is well aware that this doesn't actually involve spending the money. This is transferring the funds into these internal service funds. These internal service funds are intended to smooth out multi-year acquisitions. Uh, and so in a sense, when we wouldn't, didn't put funding into those accounts this year, um, it was, in a way, a bit of deficit spending in the sense that we are still incurring costs to pay for equipment, vehicles, things like that each year. Um, by not funding it, we were really just pushing those costs into a future year. So we are recommending, um, that 450,000 transfer. Uh, we, we are suggesting 2,500. Um, the city of Santa Cruz has a lifeguard tower that they have made available to the city of Capitola. We're actually still negotiating with them on price. Uh, we're hoping that if we do end up getting it, it would be less than 2,500. But, but at this point, our towers are quite old, and we believe that the city of Santa Cruz's extra tower is actually in better shape than anything we currently have. And then lastly, um, we're proposing a $160,000 amendment related to the SB2 grant. The SB2 grant, you'll recall, is funding from the state to help with housing production. Uh, we are, you'll recall in the grant that we have, um, identified tasks associated with developing, um, design guidelines. Um, what do we call them? There's a design guidelines that, not subjective, objective design guidelines that would allow us to review and potentially hold up multi-residential and residential housing to objective standards. In addition, we're developing some, um, some, uh, plans for prototypical ADUs to help streamline the path for new ADUs. So that's, this is simply amending the budget to recognize that revenue, uh, as well as also making available some revenue for city staff to work directly on the grant. The next slide, Jim? In addition, uh, as you'll notice later on in tonight's agenda, is we have new MOU agreements with our employee groups. Uh, we are proposing to increase personnel costs for 100, $112,000 for the remainder of this fiscal year. Um, that is associated with two things. One is ending the furlough and implementing cost of living adjustments for employees, as well as also filling one of our vacancies in the police department and offering a promotional opportunity to, uh, for, for a new sergeant. Um, the ongoing costs for all of these changes would actually total out to, uh, I believe it's... Oh, help me out here, Jim. Looks like the ongoing cost is, I guess, close to $600,000 for these things. So I think it's good to think about those in terms of the $600,000 expenditure. We are not going to incur, incur that much cost this fiscal year because there's only six months left in this fiscal year. Um, we are also decreasing some of the, the revenue, uh, sorry, the expenditures that we have in our budget in the recreation department. These were expenditures that are associated with our, uh, the contract employees who teach our classes. Because the classes aren't taking place this year, uh, we won't be, uh, extending those funds. So overall, the net increased expenditures comes out for this fiscal year of $767,000. Uh, with those changes, we anticipate that we will be increasing our general fund balance by just under $500,000 this year, which would leave a fund balance at the end of this fiscal year of 1.5 million. So with that, I'll turn it back to Jim.
Thanks, Jim. So just to go over, uh, a couple of final things on, on the funds here for, um, our, our other funds. Internal service funds, this is showing, as Jamie mentioned, this is transferring money from the general fund over to the ISFs. So this is just the other side of that transaction, recognizing those funds moving over. In the general plan update and maintenance fund, and these are special revenue funds where, um, we can only make expenditures for allowable items within those specific funds, is to increase expenditures by 25,000 for, um, planning and housing consultants to work on the LCP Coastal Commission certification. And, um, also in the supplemental law enforcement services fund, increase expenditures by 50,000. We've been slowly replacing, or we had a plan to slowly replace radios in the police department. When we took a look at this fund, we realized that we hadn't been spending all of our money in past years. So we wanted to pull, we built up about a $75,000 fund balance, plus we get about $100,000 a year. So we want to utilize about 50,000 of that fund balance and just replace all radios in, at one time. Uh, village parking, uh, just, uh, each year, the BIA, as you know, requests to suspend parking meter and pay station operation from the day after Thanksgiving through Christmas. Council has authorized this in prior years. Um, this year, at the November 12 meeting, we did not approve, um, suspending the parking meter and pay stations for this holiday season, but what, um, council requested staff to return this evening for a further discussion when we had a better idea of what the budget numbers look like. If we decide to, if council decides to suspend parking meter and pay station operation through Christmas, estimated revenue loss is between 5,000 and 10,000. And I, um, understand that we could have that, if approved, operational by the end of day, next Monday the 13th. Um, all of these items, the village parking, as well as all of the budget review, in staff's recommendation, we had a special fact meeting this past Tuesday, and all of these topics were discussed. And the, the finance advisory committee made three recommendations. The first was to accept staff's recommended budget amendments and adopt the proposed resolution. The second was to set aside somewhere between 400 to 600,000 dollars as a COVID contingency to ensure the ongoing operations and delivery of services throughout the pandemic. And the third was to implement pre-parking in the village through December 25th. Just as a reminder, um, as far as our schedule, staff plans on returning to council in January to go through the city council goal setting. Our next budget date, um, is going to be March 11th. I just found out today that we will receive our second quarter, which is October through December, sales tax data on February 22nd. That's normally when we would do the mid-year budget update, but I think it's, it's worth waiting one more meeting to get that data and do that budget review, uh, March 11. And then just as a reminder, March 1st, we will begin our budget process for fiscal year 2122. So recommended action this evening is to receive the fiscal year 2021 first quarter budget update and adopt proposed resolution amending fiscal year 2121 budget. Consider fact recommendations and provide directions to staff on those recommendations, and then any other additional directions to staff regarding any other budget changes. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Jamie. Do we have any, um, council questions at this time? Okay, um, I see Vice Mayor Story hand up.
Thank you, Mayor Brooks. Um, Jamie, Jamie, I guess I wanted to, I want to ask about the, uh, finance advisory committee recommendation that set aside 400 to 600,000, uh, for COVID relief. I was just, uh, curious about the mechanism for that. Um, are they proposing to take it from our projected, uh, year-end fund balance and, uh, kind of, uh, make a restricted account? Um, tell me more about, uh, that recommendation.
So I, I think that is basically the recommendation was that, you know, we do have members of the finance advisory committee who can chime in here. Uh, I will just give a brief overview, and then, uh, there, um, Mayor Brooks or Councilmember Peterson, you can chime in. My understanding was, that understanding that the potential for further shutdowns or further economic impacts from COVID are, are still real, that we would, uh, set aside between 400 and 600,000 dollars to buffer those impacts. And, uh, Jim and I have talked about how best to do that, and I think that there would be a couple choices for council. Probably the most easy way to do it would be similar to the way we set aside funding for the employee first-time home buyer program, the $300,000 through a designation process. Alternatively, I think we could return in January with a resolution to move it into the contingency for a limited period of time, and then it could be moved back out if it wasn't needed. Um, and Mayor Brooks and Councilmember Peterson, if you have anything else to add from the facts recommendation, please correct me if I'm wrong.
Um, so I think you've covered it all, Jamie. Um, the only thing that would have to be discussed tonight is, uh, where, how much it would be. I think Jim was able to kind of look at the numbers, um, of what we initially needed to, to put aside and came up with this kind of range. Was that, is that right, Jim?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so we're, I'm not sure if there were any other questions, Vice Mayor Story.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, one other question about the, uh, SB2 grant. Um, it was listed that there may be some staff costs of about 20,000 to 25,000. Um, will that, um, be, um, chargeable to the grant? With this stuff? Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Um, I see Councilmember Bertrand hand up.
Can you, okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I like the, um, idea of this, uh, parking card to the merchants. So I look forward to that report from, um, Cal. I believe you're working with Cal to determine how that would work out. I guess my only concern is, um, I hope it's not abuse. You know, I think it's a good idea. Um, in terms of the sales, uh, tax sales consultant that you're going to be meeting with, um, I'm very interested in the results of that because if our projections turn dire, um, this could be an early warning that we're going to have to adjust fairly soon. And then I wanted to understand about the new roles for the executive system, excuse me. And the, um, there's some half, halftime positions, rest coordinator and executive assistant roles. So I didn't understand, is there full-time or halftime, or halftime being compared to full-time? I just want to... I just want to, the clarification of that. So, so the position, the, the two halftime positions that we are currently recruiting for, um, in, in City Hall are the deputy clerk and the new personnel analyst. But those positions replace the executive assistants who recently retired. Those positions were authorized, I believe, at a meeting last month, uh, maybe, maybe in September. So they, they're actually, they're not, uh, they're, they're not for a vote this evening. Okay. Just want some clarification there. Thanks. Sure.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Uh, Councilmember Bertrand, I do still see your hand raised, if you don't, um...
Yeah, I got to get it down.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, if we can, if there's any questions from the public.
Mayor Brooks, at this time, I do not see any, uh, hands raised, uh, from the attendees on this item.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and close public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion and action.
Jim, do you want to pull up the fact recommendations so everyone can see that again?
Please do.
And I see Vice Mayor Sam Story's hand raised. Oh, here they all come. There we go. Vice Mayor Story, would you like to begin?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I, one, I think this is, um, a quite a relief from what we were looking at, um, last spring when the, uh, pandemic first hit us. Um, and so, um, you know, with that, I would like to make the motion that we accept, uh, the staff's recommendations concerning the budget amendments, um, as well as to accept of, um, uh, finance advisory committees' recommendations, um, of this, uh, to have a, a COVID, uh, set aside account, uh, in the event that we should have, um, no further, um, you know, reductions. Um, and since we're still in the midst of the pandemic, um, I would like to also recommend that we direct staff to look at setting aside, uh, six hundred thousand, um, in that, um, with that range, um, as well as to approve, uh, the free parking in the village, uh, starting December thirteenth and through December twenty-first. So I'll just take that as a motion.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Thank you. Um, I almost said mayor, sorry. Councilmember Peterson, your hand is still raised. Did you want to add anything to that?
No, I was just going to comment on the fact, um, unanimous recommendation to implement the free parking in the village for the next two weeks. Um, so I, I want to thank, uh, Vice Mayor Story for his, uh, support of, of that recommendation from the fact. I think it's really important for the business owners, um, and, and the general consensus in the fact was that, you know, this is a time of goodwill. Um, they've, they weren't able to have free parking for the first two weeks, but the next two weeks would be a good opportunity for them. And so I, I want to, um, just reiterate that, that that was unanimous among staff members, and to thank Councilmember Story, or excuse me, Vice Mayor Story, um, for, um, including that in his motion.
Wonderful, thank you. We have a first and a second. We're still open for discussion. Councilmember Bertrand.
Yes, I just want to thank the fact for weighing in on these recommendations of the COVID, uh, contingency fund in particular, and certainly supporting our continual support of the merchants downtown during this time with the free parking.
Great, thank you. And I see Councilmember Kaiser's hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I, uh, I appreciate all of these, um, things coming to us with, uh, great knowledge, and we're definitely having to change things up this year and think a little outside the box. Um, the parking, I am a huge advocate for. I'm really glad we're bringing that back to light. Um, it, with that said, I think it's something to be looked at, maybe for next year, um, while we still may be coming back from this financially, to possibly sort of implement a little more, um, restricted parking, or figure out a certain time of day that, that will get more people down there, say, at night, when there's less people down there, it's cold, it may be raining. But during the day, as Ed had brought up last meeting, you know, uh, people that aren't spending money are coming and needing the free parking. So we want to utilize it, but also maybe streamline it a little bit. But I'm stoked to have it for the rest of the month. I think it'll be great for the merchants.
Thank you, Councilmember Kaiser. And we have a first and a second. Can I have a roll call fee?
Yes, Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Agree.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story.
Aye.
And Mayor Brooks.
Aye. All right, just because it was my first meeting, I had to shake it up. So now we're going to go back to item nine A, review initial council appointment. At this time, I'll ask for a staff report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Brooks. I'll be providing the report, so if you give me one moment to switch hats here and share the slideshow. And... Okay, one moment. Okay, thank you, Mayor Brooks. And council, can everyone hear me? Great, thank you. So this is just going to be a brief report. We're hopefully going to go over just a few appointments that council has to make for city advisory bodies, as well as some regional bodies that you yourselves sit on as our representatives. So just a brief overview, overview, the city here in Capitola, we have established multiple city advisory bodies on which, um, citizens sit as your representatives for more specific topics, such as the Art and Cultural Commission, for example, whereas there are multi-jurisdictional advisory bodies, either in the county or regional, where members of council themselves serve as Capitola's representatives for more bigger picture issues and topics. So I think we're all familiar with that, but we wanted to just do a brief overview. Tonight, we will be making appoint, you will, excuse me, be making appointments only for advisory bodies that have meetings in early January. We wanted to take care of this now, and then we will come back in January at that first meeting, the city council meeting on January fourteenth, to finish this item and provide representation on all boards, committees, and commissions that will be having meetings in 2021. So tonight, we will, the appointments will be for the city bodies on our planning commission and the Art and Cultural Commission. For the multi-jurisdictional bodies, there are, um, just a few that I'm not going to read because we're going to talk about them one by one. So, uh, I will just ask the council to affirm or to make their appointment. It doesn't need to be a full, um, roll call vote each time. So each slide has a different commission, board, or committee. And if anyone has any questions, please feel free to ask. Oh, and I believe, actually, I'm so sorry, we wanted to go to public comment just on the basic item first, and then we'll go through each one.
Thank you, Chloe. So at this time, we'll go ahead and, um, I'll ask the moderator for, if there's any public comments.
Mayor Brooks, I do not see anybody, any attendees with their hand raised for comment on this item.
Great, thank you. We'll go ahead and return back to you, Chloe.
Thank you. So our first city advisory body, like mentioned, the Planning Commission. Technically, all five, um, seated commissioners, their terms are expiring. Uh, four of them are considered incumbent commissioners. They're listed here with their corresponding council member appointee, uh, appointer, I should say. They have all indicated their interest in continuing on Planning Commission. The new council member Kaiser has yet to make an appointment. That would be done tonight. We received two applications. Their names are listed here. One from Paul Esti and a second from Susan Westman. Their applications were included in the agenda packet, um, and so there was time to review those. So what I think would be easiest, if, um, if our current council, who's been seated before, would like to affirm that they want to reappoint their incumbent commissioner, we can run through that first, and then we'll have, uh, Councilmember Kaiser make her appointment. Is that all right?
That sounds great.
Okay, so, uh, Mayor Brooks, would you like to reappoint Courtney?
Yes.
Wonderful. And how about Vice Mayor Story? Would you like to reappoint McRuth?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Bertrand, your appointee is Ed Newman. Would you like to reappoint him?
Definitely.
Thank you. And Councilmember Peterson, your appointee, Peter Wilk. You want to keep him on board?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I've had a good working relationship with him, and I'm, I'm excited to have him on, uh, Planning Commission.
Thank you. So that's great. And then, um, I'll turn to you, Councilmember Kaiser.
I'll be appointing Susan Westman. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, so for our next city body, it's even easier. For Art and Cultural Commission, four out of the seven, uh, members have expiring terms. However, the terms, they don't, um, they need to be renewed, but they can do as many terms as they'd like moving forward. There's no term limits. So they're listed here. There's, uh, two at-large members, one artist and one art professional member that have all indicated their desire to continue. Um, since it's just, uh, the council as a whole that makes these appointments, you can all affirm that you're all right with these, these four. And I just wanted to point out, we did not receive any new applications for this commission. So let's just run through, um, in affirming. Is, is everyone all right with that? Yes? Okay, great. I'm going to take that as a yes. Thank you. And the next few are multi-jurisdictional advisory bodies on which yourselves sit on these boards, commissions, and committees. So I'm just, have a basic overview of what they do, when they're meeting, the first meeting in January, and who is currently, um, on this board, commission, or committee. Most of them, you're not terming off. We just like to re, we, we like to affirm every, um, year that you want to continue as the representative. So for the advisory council of the area agency on aging, it's a lot of As, um, an advocacy group about for the elderly, this is meeting in January, and Jacques Bertrand is our current representative. Is that all right? Or do you want to change it up?
Uh, yeah, I'll continue. I had a meeting today, as a matter of fact. But I would like to point out, as far as I know, Carolyn is, uh, has, um, left the board as an alternate. So we do need an alternate from this, from this group. It'd be nice to get someone from the, uh, city council as an alternate.
Wonderful.
But it doesn't have to be. If you're interested in, um, senior issues, um, this is a great way to get involved.
Okay, so, um, now that we know that's an option, are there any council members interested in becoming an alternate for, um, for this particular commission at this time? Okay, doesn't seem, um, as if there are any. Maybe this is something we can post, Chloe?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm making note of that. Thank you, Councilmember Bertrand, for letting me know about that. Our next board is similar. Again, if you want to continue, you may as the representative. However, you'll note that our alternate, um, has, is no longer seated on council, so we will need an alternate for Ambag, who provide leadership for counties and cities in our area, and their next meeting is January thirteenth. Is anyone interested in being an alternate? And Councilmember Peterson, would you like to continue?
I would like to continue, thank you.
Okay.
And I'll be the alternate.
Great, thank you. Thank you for your patience, as I'm taking minutes and presenting here. Okay, so for the Santa Cruz County Sanitation District, a similar spiel here. The current representation is Councilmember Bertrand, and Vice Mayor Story, you are the alternate. Uh, I apologize that the next meeting is actually not until January twenty-first. However, generally, they do have the first Thursday meeting, which would have been before council. So you have a little break, but, um, I'd still love to know if you want to continue on this board, or this district board, yes?
Yeah, I'll be glad to continue. Um, today, as a matter of fact, I went on a tour of the facility, so it keeps you busy.
Great, thank you.
Well, I'm happy to continue as Yawk's alternate.
Thank you. Just a few more. And in this case, uh, we do have, you know, Councilmember Botor is no longer on council, and his term had expired, so we need, we'll need a new represent, representative for the Santa Cruz Metro Board, um, that I believe works with the RTC as well. So this is the transportation agency in our area.
I'd be happy to, um, to take that seat if there's no other interested council members.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that have an alternate, Maya?
I, you know, I don't think an alternate would be problematic. I didn't see one noted, but it's always a good idea. If you're interested, I can write, I can note that.
Well, maybe we can advertise for an alternate, so...
Okay. Okay. Okay?
I just don't know.
I, I will get back to you. I will check on that. And... In this case, this is previously known as, um, I'm totally blanking on the, the previous name, but it's now Central Coast Clean Energy Policy Board, because it's expanded outside of Monterey Bay. Uh, this is our community choice electricity provider, and the representative will be technically appointed by the county city selection committee, uh, either end of this month or early January. The first official meeting is February seventeenth. So whomever from city council is interested will be appointed by the city selection committee.
Chloe, I'm interested in this, in this division.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
And I think that could be the alternate, if we need that.
Okay.
Or is it supposed to be from council, the alternate?
Yes, I believe that that is fine. And I spoke with their, uh, their board clerk, and she did mention their, they were looking for an alternate. So thank you, I'll, I'll note you down.
Okay, cool.
Wonderful. And I believe, huh, that's all. Good job. And this is just a preview for what we'll be taking on January fourteenth. There will be a few more city-specific bodies, and about the same amount, multi-jurisdictional bodies, most of which we are just going to confirm that those that are serving are interested in continuing. You'll notice, though, that the library advisory committee is the council appointing a community member. So though we don't, as staff, run that advisory body, it's regional, it is a community member, not a member of council that sits on that committee. So if you have any questions from between now and January, feel free to let me know, and we are open, the recruitment is open for these listed, uh, advisory bodies. And with that, I'll say thank you for your patience.
Chloe, I believe we have a, um, a hand raised, maybe it's a question. Vice Mayor Story, did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I did have a question. Um, my question was, um, about the council appointment to the Arts Commission.
Yes.
I didn't see that on the list, and I wasn't sure, you know, on that appointment, I wasn't sure if it's up for renewal or, or affirmation, or if there was other council members that may be interested in that.
Are you referring to the, you serving on the city's Art and Cultural Commission?
Yes.
Okay, so I didn't see that your term was expiring. However, um, I will double-check that. Um, I did see that you were the current representative.
Okay, yeah, I was, yeah, I wasn't sure that there was a set, you know, turn, multiple year term. So, yeah, just check it out and bring it back for us with next week.
Absolutely, thank you.
Um, I do see Councilmember Bertrand hand, uh, raised. Do you have a question, Councilmember Bertrand?
Yeah, I do. Um, since I went to a meeting this Wednesday, I thought the Santa Cruz County Flood Control and Water Conservation District was Zone Five.
Oh, you're correct.
Maybe...
Yes.
Yeah, because I was there for Zone Five, okay.
I think that was a typo, so thank you for correcting me.
Yeah, I waited five hours to get my time on the agenda, so...
Thank you for that, Councilmember Bertrand. Okay, so, um, if the city manager can remind me, is this, do we need, um, a motion, or...
I think at this stage, you're good.
Yes.
Well, Chloe, do you have everything you need for this evening?
Yes. Yes, I, that was perfectly done, thank you, and again, thank you, that was a lot of information. I will turn it back to council and to the mayor.
Thank you, Chloe. Okay, we're gonna be moving on to item 9C. I have something that I need to read before we move forward, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So before the city council this evening, as part of Agenda Item 9C, is a recommendation for salary changes for the following employee groups. Association of Capitola Employees, Confidential, Mid-Management, Police Captain, and At-Will Management Employees. The At-Will Management Employees consist of department heads and the city manager. The employee agreements before the city council would rescind the 6% COVID-related salary reduction and a 2.25% cost of living adjustment effective December 27, 2020, for the listed groups, including department heads and the city manager. And at this time, I'll go ahead and ask for a staff report.
Thank you very much, Mayor Brooks, let me try and share my screen. Sorry, it takes a while with this one. Screen. Okay, I hope you see that okay. So are you seeing the presentation? Just, okay, great, thank you. So I'll go back a little bit, back into 2020. We were not sure of what the, obviously, the budget impacts were gonna be of COVID. So in April, May, we anticipated a pretty significant, a projected deficit of $4.5 million. So because of that, the city began negotiations on concessions with the employee groups in June, July of last year, for agreements through December 26th of this year. The miscellaneous groups, ACE, Mid-Management, Confidential, the Police Captains, as well as Executive Management, came to an agreement of a 6% salary reduction with a 40-hour additional leave offset, as well as no vacation cash out. The Capitola Police Office Association, the city, agreed on a 2% salary reduction and deferral of a contractual 2.25 COLA, which was to be implemented last July, but it was deferred until January of this year, next year. They also included a vacation cash out. Because we were coming to the end of those agreements, and as the finance director reported earlier, revenues have been better than projected. So we began meeting with the groups for new agreements, basically to take us through the end of this fiscal year. The CPOA, the Police Office Association, have an existing contract, it was in place through June 30th of this year. The other groups had agreements that were actually ending on December 26th of this year. The existing CPOA agreement includes the following, rescinding the 2% salary reduction effective December 27. The deferral of the July 2020 COLA will be in place in January 2021. And there was also an existing 2.25% cost of living adjustment in January of 2021 as well. The vacation cash out suspension is still in place. The six-month agreement with the other groups, ACE, Mid-Management, Confidential, Police Captains, and as the mayor reported, Executive Management, includes rescinding the 6% salary reduction effective December 27, 2020, and a 2.25 cost of living adjustment effective December 27, 2020. The vacation cash out suspension is still in place for those groups as well. And the city and the employee groups will begin negotiation on successor agreements for beyond the end of this fiscal year, early 2021. As we get more information, you know, from our revenues as well as expenditures, we'll be talking with the groups at that point, for longer-term contracts beyond the six months we're talking about here. So at this point, the recommended action is to authorize the city manager to execute side letter agreements with the existing, with the groups, the Association of Capitola Employees, Mid-Management, Confidential employees, bargaining unit, as well as the police captain. Approve changes to the management compensation plan, which is the department heads. Approve the Sixth Amendment to the city manager employee contract. And to adopt a resolution approving the new salary schedule, there was one update and additional materials for one position. In addition, no action is needed on the CPOA, the Police Office Association agreement, because their contract was in place through June 30th of this year. And that is my presentation, I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Larry. Do we have any council questions at this time? Okay, seeing none. Do we have any members of the public who have comments?
I do not see anybody in the public asking to comment on this item.
Okay, so we can go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion and action. I see Councilmember Peterson's hand raised.
Yeah, I'd like to move approval of the recommended action.
A second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Is there any other discussion from council at this time? Alright, if we can have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Agreed.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story.
Aye.
Mayor Brooks.
Aye. Okay, this item passes unanimously. Okay, now we're gonna move on to item 9D, council compensation. Can I have a report from staff, please?
Thank you, Mayor Brooks, let me share my screen real quick. See if I can do it firstly two times. Can everyone see that? Alright, thank you. So by way of background, in September of 2019, you recall council voted to adopt ordinance number 1032, increasing the city council's monthly salary from $500 to $600 monthly. This item was actually presented to the Finance Advisory Committee, and this increase is consistent with the recommendation that came from the FAC. This would also be the first increase to council compensation since December of 2006. However, due to California Government Code, when council, the increase could not become effective until after the November election of this year. And this same California Government Code allows any or all council members to waive compensation. Each council member should individually confirm compensation adjustments. In May, city council unanimously agreed to defer the increase and reduce compensation by 6% to be consistent with the concessions that were being made by the employees in the miscellaneous labor groups. And since it was unanimous, there was no change to the ordinance that was required at that time. As we just heard, the, from the last two presentations, on December 27th, those employee concessions will be ending, and for the miscellaneous group, there will be a 2.25% cost of living adjustment. If council approves increasing the monthly salary $600 a month, the annual increase is $7,000, that's $6,000 in salary, $1,000 in benefits, and that's the entire council, that's not each council member, just wanna make sure that's clear. So our recommendation is to affirm that the city council's monthly compensation should return to the amount specified in the municipal code beginning on December 27, 2020. And just as a reminder, each council member should individually confirm the compensation adjustment. And that concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any council questions at this time? Okay, I'm seeing none. Do we have any questions or comments from our public about this item?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see any, anyone with their hands up, and I do not see any emails on this item.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring this back to council for discussion and action. I see Councilmember Peterson's hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor Brooks. I just want to acknowledge that we did receive some public comments on that, on this item via email, with concerns about the percentage of the increase, and I want to address those concerns, because I feel like generally, when council members or any elected body increases their own compensation, that there may be questions or concerns about that, I feel like it's worth addressing that. As mentioned in the slide, the council hasn't increased their compensation in the last 13 years. And if council compensation had received a COLA in the way that staff had, then the pay for council would have been quite higher by this time. Of course, it's not necessarily always appropriate for there to be the same kind of increase every year for council as there is with staff, as staff, as I say, are the experts, and as I've said before, as council members are kind of jacks-of-all-trades and masters of none. But that being said, I think it's also important to note, as was discussed in the FAC, and I also want to point out that in the FAC discussion on this item, myself and at the time Vice Mayor, now Mayor Brooks, did not vote on this item because we were impacted by it. But, but, or I guess at the time it was myself and council member, or then Mayor Bertrand, my apologies. On that, on the item, but we did have discussion on it, and in the discussion with the FAC, part of the decision behind the idea to increase council compensation was that one, being a council member is quite costly at times, and it may be a little bit different during COVID times, but typically, there are lots of requests to come to public events where you have to buy a ticket, or to join someone for a lunch, or a coffee to discuss city issues, and all of those costs add up. And we certainly wouldn't want someone to not run for council because they feel that they couldn't afford to do so. So that was part of the discussion in the FAC a year or two ago. Certainly feels like decades ago, from, in 2020, as most things do now. But I just wanted to take a moment to comment on that and bring that up, because we did receive question about it, that I certainly wanted it to be addressed.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Are there any other council members with any comments? Vice Mayor Story's hand up.
Thank you, Mayor Brooks, and I just wanted to add to what Councilmember Peterson had just mentioned about the Finance Advisory Committee, and that this recommendation came through the Finance Advisory Committee. And they did it through a comparable analysis study of similar communities in central California. And, you know, ranging at from $500 to $600 a month, was, came out of their analysis and their recommendation solely. And so that's on the basis that I had originally approved it. I just wanted to add that for the record, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Story. Are there any other comments at this time? We're still open for a motion.
I'll move the recommendation.
Do you have a first?
I'll second that.
You have a second. Any other comments? Seeing none, can I have a roll call?
Councilmember Bertrand.
I confirm my vote.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story.
Aye, and I confirm.
Thank you, and Mayor Brooks.
Aye, and I confirm. The motion passes unanimously. We're now gonna move on to item 9E, consider approval of the contract changes, change orders number nine and 10 for the Capitola Branch Library Project. And I have a report from staff, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you tonight is about the library, and I'm gonna share my screen, so give me a minute here, please. There we go, I hope you can all see the presentation. Like I said, the item behind you is a report we do periodically on the library project, which is still under construction. Tonight, you will be asked to approve change orders nine and 10 on the project. Current status of the project is probably the best news we've had in quite a while. The conflicting power lines that had delayed construction on the project for approximately a year at this point have been relocated. And the last line was moved on October 24, 2020. Auto construction, the prime contractor on the job is now working without delays with a full crew. They are focusing on both finishing the exterior, and working on interior work that had been delayed because we didn't have a weatherproof building. Eve overhangs have been framed, I think that's probably the biggest thing you see as you drive by there now. And permanent power has been installed, and which has allowed us to start climatizing the interior, which needs to be done before we do the final finishes. The children's room is currently being climatized, and they have put in some of the finishes there. I have some pictures I'll be showing you in a bit, where I'll show you that. Brief history on the contract change orders. Today, eight change orders have been approved for the city council policy on this project. We did adopt a special policy for approving change orders for this project because of the size of the project. The net total of the change orders one through eight have actually reduced the construction costs from the original contract by $446,135. The council will remember, we awarded the contract and then went through quite a bit of value engineering to bring the cost into the targets that the council had set when we approved the project before we issued a notice to proceed. Change orders nine or 10, which are before you tonight, will add approximately $90,000 to the existing contract. Brief on, brief description of change order nine and 10. Change order nine just is non-power line related, we're trying to keep this separate because we are trying to keep track of the costs that the power line conflicts have caused us. So these are not related to that, there's a $39,617 change order, approximately $19,000 of that was for unforeseen drainage improvements that were necessary. Essentially, there's some old drain lines probably date back to when the project was, where the site was first developed, it was a large site at that time. Even though those drain lines don't connect, or we don't know where they connect to, they still are producing water, and that water is building up behind the foundation, the library, so we needed to do some work to take that water and make sure it got into the storm drain system. The Santa Cruz Public Library System has also requested some changes and/or upgrades to the security systems in place, they're trying to get each system to be uniform across their many branches. That's a $20,000 additional cost. Now, change order 10 is completely power line related, and it's costing $49,640. Breaking that down, the roof and the beams on the roof, we had to change how it got built. In order to get a roof on the part of the building that we had built already, we modified the roof trusses and basically took off the overhangs, and had it bolted back on, and the beams, the same thing with the steel beams that go across the structure. So to deal with that, another $22,495. It's quite a bit of going back and forth with PG&E that the contractor had to go through, negotiating and making sure that their project was actually meeting the conditions. We, they did quite a bit of surveying to make sure PG&E was aware of how far the lines needed to be moved. So that coordination effort was $18,041. And it also required us how would we change the paving in the parking lot. It intended to be done in one move prior to this winter. They would do it at the end of construction, come in and pave it with one four-inch lift, one four-inch section of pavement. Because of, they're not finished, they're still driving heavy equipment over, but in order to make it better for the winter, they did one two-inch lift, which will require- order to make it better for the winter, they did one two-inch lift, which will require them to come back and do a second lift at $9,000 for that. Those are the two change orders that are being considered tonight. I want to give a quick financial review. It's been a while since we've done this on the project, especially with the new council member. These are the funding sources for the project. These numbers have not changed since this was last presented to you, but just revealing it. Measure S is $10 million that we received from Measure S. I think it was originally $10 million, and we added another $269,600 in interest from Measure S. The successor agency, we received $2.741 million from them. The general fund put in a little over $1.5 million. The friends of the library have raised $600,000, which has gone directly into the construction project. County Library Funds has donated, or not donated, but have provided $510,000, and we've had $130,000 in investment earnings. So in total, we have $15,803.99, $997 in revenues. The project budget at this time has remained at $15,150,000, leaving a available funds of $653,000 that have not been allocated to the project that are available. On the expenditure side, the construction costs through, construction, our change order number eight was $11,875,865. Construction's nine, these change orders nine and 10 are there adding in, which hopefully we'll prove tonight. We have architectural fees at $1.5 million, permits and special inspections at $150,000, project management fees for our project manager who's on-site daily and running the project for the city, little under $300,000. Miscellaneous expenses are tree reports and other things of $18,000. Fixtures, furniture, and equipment, which are all ordered and sitting in several warehouses right now, are $408,000. The PG&E costs have been all around the place. To remove the lines, they ended up costing us $1,450, which is kind of scary that we had to wait a year to get that work completed. In summary, project budget, we have $15,803,997 available. Total expenses of a little 14.3 million, so we have a current balance contingency of 1.4 million. We do have anticipated change orders still coming, a total of $651,000 of those. The anticipated PG&E delay costs are going to be about $300,000 at this time we anticipate. So with that, we still hope to have remaining funds of close to $800,000 of this project budget. So here, I have a series of pictures. We walked the site last week, and just wanted to share a couple with you as we move forward. Here's the entrance. You can see the EPE wood in place, the Capitol branch sign. Over here is the front door, when that gets built, and over here is the community room. You can see it's quite a beautiful entrance to the building. This shows the siding that's going on, the majority of the building, and here you get a good look at the eaves that are finally constructed all the way around the building. Before, they had already been constructed on mainly the side away from Warf Road and partially along the other two sides, so it's great to see that in good shape. These doors, just for your information, will be the service employee entry doors. So here's going around the other side of the building. This is, behind these windows is the children's area, and this area between this oak tree here and the building is where the large deck will be, and there'll be places to read out there. The top lot is just outside the picture to the right of the tree. This is the corner sign at the corner of Warf Road and Claire Street. That's, I think, just recently built. I wanted to share that with you, and you can see the scaffolding and the wires up here. This is the scaffolding that could not be built. I think we got to about the mid-level before, and now allows us to build scaffolding up to the top of the building and complete construction. Moving to the interior, starting with the children's area. I started with this because it actually has the ceiling in place. You can see it's a slatted ceiling with a black background. These holes here are sonotubes that are bringing light in, and these two actually have the diffuser on them that actually, we were there on a four o'clock in the afternoon, and the amount of light provided by these was quite a bit. I will admit, say that this is the area that the art project for the building will be built. Leaves will be hanging to try and bring the outdoors in, will be hanging from the ceiling. There's going to be a lot going on on the ceiling, while diffusers will have leaves and will have sprinkler head, but it should be quite beautiful when it's done. This is turning around from looking at the children's room into the community room. It's going to have the same ceiling here that is in the children's area. It's going to have a collapsible wall that goes across here so that there can be meetings and presentations going on here, separate from the children's area. But if there's nothing going on here and the librarians want to, they can open up this wall and make this part of the children's area. This will have a small kitchenette in there with a sink and refrigerator, I believe, and the rest of this is storage for tables and chairs. And this is the main room of the library, after you walk in. The ceiling here will be put in, it'll be the same ceiling that you saw in the children's room, except instead of being white, it'll be a natural wood color. Remember, this is supposed to be the bottom of a boat in the design, so it will have a continuous running slats going down the ceiling. This is the corner nearest to Warf and Claire's, has a great view overlooking the Rissman Mansion. This area here is where the librarian's desk will be, and over here is a series of meeting and conference rooms that will be available for users to use. So with that, the recommended action tonight is to receive this report and approve contract change orders nine and 10 with auto construction for the Capitol branch library project in the amount of $89,257,000. $89,257,000, you excuse me. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have any questions from council? I see Vice Mayor Story's hand is raised.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Steve, for that report and update. It's really encouraging to see that we've almost completed, and one question I have is, when do you project the ribbon cutting will take place?
At this point, we are projecting a mid to late February completion of the project. We have the furniture being delivered, making it mid-February. That'll give them enough time to go through the change orders. So at this time, I'd say the end of February is our target date at this point.
Yeah, that sounds great. And one other question about the surplus contingency balance. Will that, let's, and assuming that it's $800,000, will that all be credited back to the general fund?
Yes, it will.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Story.
Sorry.
Do you have a comment?
I was just going to add something to the response about Councilmember Story's question about the ribbon cutting. The library, the library JPA has indicated that they need about 60 days to sort of outfit and furnish the building, so the contractor will be done in February, but we don't think that the building wouldn't be ready to open until probably the end of April, and that's, of course, contingent upon being able to open libraries at that point. But I just want to make that clear, so nobody thinks that the doors are going to be open in February.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Bertrand, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was going to ask about that too, because the vacant building would be just a part of the first step, and then we have the filling out of it. So is there a chance for a tour? I didn't know there was a tour. I'd love to go see it at this stage if that's possible.
Yeah, we did manage to have a quick tour last week, and I'd be happy to try and set one up, but they're still under COVID restrictions at the libraries, at the construction site, so, but I'd be happy to put something together.
And have we reached out to the Friends of the Library Group, giving them a tour, or is that in the planning? They'd be very interested, I'm sure.
Right, we're trying to keep the tour group small, but I'd be happy to talk to them.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Appreciate it.
Are there any other questions from council at this time? Okay, seeing none. This is a time, fresh questions from our public. Larry, do we have any questions?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see any attendees with their hands raised, and I do not see any emails on this item.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion and action. I see Vice Mayor Story's hand.
I just wanted to make a motion to approve staff recommendations concerning change orders nine and 10.
No, I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Any other comments at this time? Okay, seeing none. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bertrand.
I approve.
Councilmember Kaiser.
I approve.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story.
Aye.
Mayor Brooks.
Aye. All right, well, that brings us to the end of our meeting. We're on item 10 for adjournment. Thank you, council, staff, and Capitola. As with Councilmember Peterson, she had a closing, so I worked really hard on this one. Please remember to find the good in others and yourself. Until next time, good night.
Hopefully, a meeting. Night.
Thank you. Good night.
Night.
Goodbye.